Okay, we're going. Thank you, everybody, for coming to City Council tonight in Spanish Fork on July 2nd, 2024. We appreciate all of you being here in attendance personally and virtually, wherever you might be watching in the world. We'll get started like we always do here in Spanish Fork with a prayer and motivational message, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, Councilman Euler has a guest for the prayer, and followed by Councilwoman Beck giving us the pledge. So, Councilman Euler.
Thank you, Mayor. I've invited my good friend and neighbor Jim Jett to come and give our thought and prayer tonight. And Jim and his wife Leanne are also members of our CERT Team, our Community Emergency Response Team, so we're grateful for them participating in that. So Jim, I'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you. So Nick's gonna put up a picture for us here. There it is. Okay. On the screen we are viewing, you see the 2024 award-winning float in the annual Lehigh, Utah Parade. I was privileged to get a copy of this because my son-in-law was the one who designed it and executed it. So, anyway, you can see on the screen, the primary focus is "Ordinary People Built an Extraordinary America." And we all know this is true. We're the beneficiaries of it. But I feel we are ordinary people, and we're still working to build and/or restore our extraordinary America right here in Spanish Fork. So take note of what we're doing. We meet together, we help each other, we work together, we listen to each other, we encourage each other, and we try to involve ourselves as citizens and accept the responsibility to work together to understand our Declaration of Independence and our United States Constitution, so that everyone in our country can promote obedience to these God-given principles and concepts. So I suggest, and I encourage, that it is appropriate, and perhaps even essential, that each of us, at least annually, reread these two documents, and insist that all government leaders and employees also reread and follow them. It is also probably appropriate to invite any and all elected appointed officials who fail to follow the Constitution in spirit and in letter to simply resign from their positions if they are not able and willing to follow and obey these two documents. Peace, prosperity, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness require obedience to law. It seems to me that people who prefer disobedience could be happier to live somewhere other than the United States of America. They're certainly welcome to make that choice. I'm pleased I get to live and serve with so many fine people who try to respect and follow our U.S. Constitution the best they can, thus here in Spanish Fork. It's wonderful that we have the tradition to celebrate our country's beginning, and I'm deeply grateful for all those who made sacrifices 250 years ago that make our blessings available now. Kevin, thank you for your invitation to share these thoughts and begin this evening's meeting with prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we count it our privilege to live in this country with so many sacrifices that have been made that are blessing us now. We pray that it will help us to remember this and live up to the blessings that we have, that we'll take advantage of the availability of these correct principles, to make our lives more productive, and to help our neighbors and work together, to bring to pass all those things that will be blessings to the people in our country. We seek Thy help as we work together to listen to each other and make good decisions that will lead to good results for our community and our people that live here. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
I invite everyone to stand, remove cover if needed, and repeat the pledge after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay. In case you haven't noticed, I will just tell everyone, no, Shane, Councilman Marshall has not worn off on the rest of us as far as wearing golf polos to council meeting, but he's trying. His efforts are always spirited. But tonight is a special night at council meeting that has to do with the city celebration coming up. And I will turn the time over to our council member that's over that section, Councilwoman Beck.
Thank you, Mayor. We are so excited that July is here, and we want to kick it off, guys. So let's give Spanish Fork a big yee-haw. Let's see, make sure it's on frontwards, too.
It's so embarrassing when you wear backwards.
I know.
You got it, Jesse?
Jesse?
He's got it.
Jesse's good, Landon's good. All right. Well, I am honored to invite our executive of yesterday's committee up to the pulpit to tell us all things of yesterday's. I know you guys have a lot of information. I know we will be interested in hearing. The listeners, viewers will need to know. And so tell us all the things that you came tonight prepared to let our residents know about.
Well, thank you, Stacy, Mayor, City Council, City Employees. We're grateful for the opportunity to be here tonight and to represent our city for Fiestas Days. What an awesome opportunity it is to be a part of Fiestas Days, to be a part of a celebration that brings our community together and unites us, no matter where we're from or what our background is. It's an awesome thing to be a part of, and we're grateful for the opportunity to do that. My name is Garrett Anderson, my wife Stephanie Anderson. We are the chairs this year for Fiestas Days. With us as well is Max and Amy Darrington. They're the outgoing chairs. And Mario and Valerie Benson are not here tonight. They're the incoming chairs. So next year, we're gonna put them in the spotlight and make sure they sweat a little bit because they missed tonight. So...
You can tell the outgoing ones there have bigger smiles.
Yes. They know the end is near. That light's getting bigger, getting bigger for sure. But as you can see on your shirts, our theme this year is "The Brand You Trust." And for Stephanie and I, it really made a connection that our city really comes together. We can trust that everyone is a part of this. We're grateful for the city. We're grateful for the city employees behind the scenes that do a lot of work, our police officers, our firefighters, our EMS, everybody that really puts in a lot of time and effort to make this a great event. For us as well, being a part of that with our committees and those that support us and support the events that were over, it really is an awesome thing to be a part of. And the great thing is, we all get to celebrate together, and there's nothing better, in my mind. So, we're gonna talk about a few events. I'm gonna talk about the Pyro Musical. It's the biggest event to start us off. There's some events before that, but the Pyro Musical really is the biggest event that gets us going for Fiestas Days. Our Pyro Musical this year... Yes, I have it marked somewhere, but Saturday, July 13th, we've got Clayton Smalley that will be the opening act. He's a local Spanish Fork resident. And then we also have the Music City Groove that's gonna come, and they're gonna get us grooving and get us dancing. So hopefully you've got your dancing shoes, your dancing boots ready to go and ready for that. And then we've got the great Pyro Musical Firework Display afterwards, which I think is one of the best in the state. So what a great way to kick it off and start it off. I'm gonna turn the time over to our committee, and they'll talk about a few more events.
So I just want to plug, there's a lot that happens at City Park from our near carnival that's there, food vendors, craft fair. We end with our children's parade there, have the children's activity days there. And then I also want to put a plug in for the sidewalk sales. I'm always impressed with the businesses around here that support and sustain our community by participating in Fiestas Days, too. So those are just a few I wanted to highlight. Well, first of all, we are the outgoing chairs, so we can kick up our heels a little bit, but we really have had such a great experience, and we appreciate the opportunity. When we came down today, I looked around the room and thought, oh, these are all my friends that I've met and worked with for Fiestas Days. So we've appreciated the opportunity. The one thing that I wanted to talk about was all of the Fiestas Days entertainment. Garrett mentioned we have Clayton Smalley and Music City Groove on July 13th. On July 19th, we will have Spanish Fork's Got Talent. July 20th, we have the Car Show, Mr. and Mrs. Extraordinaire Pageant, and the Street Dance with Peak Entertainment. The 21st is Sunday in the Park, and we will have Lincoln Highway. The 22nd is Family Night in the Park with HypnoHic, and he's always a crowd favorite. The 23rd, we will have the Ballet Folgloria Quetzalcoatl, and they are a group that will bring a little bit of fiesta to Fiestas Days. And then finally, obviously, on the 24th, we always have lots of entertainment with the Grand Parade and then music in the park afterwards. So we are looking forward to it. And then that night, we will have fireworks and entertainment with Fire at Will. So thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you as well. We have thoroughly enjoyed our time, being able to be a part of this committee. I'm just gonna talk on a couple of items. Two of my favorite things is one is the Car Show, which will be on the 18th on Saturday. That starts at around about 8 o'clock. There'll be all kinds of cars. Last year was our biggest event that we've had so far. We had almost upward to 20...oh, 20, 200 entries, cars of every age, just about, pickups as well. We actually had a couple of tractors that showed up as well, I think, which I thought was quite unusual. Then there will be also a live band that's sponsored by Cutting Edge. The live band will be called Cry Wolf. It's a great event to be able to come out and then see all of the great cars that people love to have and to show off. The other item that I wanted to talk a bit about is the pie-eating contest, not contest, but the pie baking contest.
We make it a meeting.
We do. We actually get to be the ones that judge the event. But there's three categories. There's a berry, fruit and berry, what's the other ones?
Fruit, nonfruit.
Nonfruit and cream. We have had a couple of ice cream cakes or pies that came, but we've asked them not to do that again this year because they melt pretty quick. The winners will be announced on the 21st at the event that night. So thank you so much for your support with that.
We have some t-shirts for you. It looks like you're already sporting the polos. So we have a t-shirt and a magazine for you as well that we're gonna bring up to you. Just a reminder to the citizens, we no longer have online sales for the t-shirts. They need to come into the rec office for that moving forward. So hopefully we see you sporting those t-shirts. And yeah, you look good with polos on. So Shane, keep pushing it.
Keep pushing, huh? This is how we should look every week. Thank you.
Can you let residents know for t-shirts what the cost is, and the rec department, being in the old library, is their new headquarters, right?
It is. It's in the old library at the City Park. T-shirts are $10 for the smaller sizes up to a large or extra-large, and then 15 for those sizes larger than that. So pretty reasonable price for a t-shirt, and everybody will look good in it, too. So spend 10 bucks to look good. I think it's worth it, for sure. So we also want to invite up our grand marshals, Dave and Susan Euler, if they'll come up. We just want to recognize them for the great service that they provided to our community as well. You can see just in the write-up that they had how much they've given to our community. Dave serving as a recorder and then as our city manager. A lot of the things that we enjoy in our city now are because of his efforts and the efforts that he put forth while he was working for the city. And none of that ever goes on without the help and support of a loving wife and that support at home, too. So I know their seven children are grateful for their example and the things that they've done and for all of their efforts to make our city a wonderful place. And it's with great pride that I recognize them for those efforts and as our grand marshals this year for Fiestas Days. We've got a chair for each of them. So wherever they go, they'll have a reserved seat for them, or wherever they set up their chair. So I don't know if you guys want to say anything at all, or...
They better.
They better.
I want to see my mom's parade wave if she's got that down.
It's definitely an honor to be recognized as the grand marshals. It's been fun and exciting, and we're anticipating the fun events that are coming forward. And I've sat through a lot of meetings and looked at the grand marshals as they've come up and addressed the council, but never thought we would be here. We're excited to attend the events and excited for the opportunity to represent the city as our grand marshals.
It was a plan on a term, but six months, six or seven months ago, we were asked if we would be the grand marshals. And I don't think they were gonna leave our living room until we said yes.
I don't think you said yes. You said, "We'll let you know."
I did, and I didn't let you know.
You eventually let me know.
It's an honor, and I was a little nervous about it back then because I didn't really know, you know, a lot about it. But the closer it gets and the more exciting, and, you know, you look back at the generations that we've come from and the loving family and the blessings that's brought to our family, and seeing my dad's old reels on the movies and how things have changed. Main Street's changed, the cars have changed, the floats have changed, but the people are still the same. And I just want to give all of you a big thank you for this honor, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you. If I sit down, can I have the executive committee and Emily and Bronco, I want to just thank you each for all the time you put in. The executive committee, when we say outgoing for the Darringtons, that means that they have, they've served for three full years. And it's not just service during July. It's, we ramp up just the week after Fiestas Days, and we invite a new incoming chairman by September. Monthly meetings, and you oversee a lot that's going on. And then city staff, Bronco Hunter, Emily Harriman, and Jenny Peterson are awesome to keep us all organized. They pay attention to the details. We obviously couldn't do it without you guys. We just walk around in our nice polos and smile, but you guys are really the backbone of all of it. And so thank you. And I have a gift for each of you. If maybe a couple of you will just run up here and grab that. Thank you. Next.
Can we get a picture with them?
Oh, yeah, let's have a picture. Come back up front.
Come on, committee, and the Oilers, please. Come on up.
Should we have...
Next up, we're going to have the...
Oilers have their chair out.
Yeah. Somebody doesn't look like the rest of us.
Someone to give Bronco the memo.
No, Oilers right in the middle, right, right there.
Stick out like a red thumb. All right, front row, come this way. Keep going. All right, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Well, now you do.
Well, you don't have one yet.
Okay, next up, we would like to invite Nick, Nick Hanks, from our incredible rodeo. Nick, you can take it from here.
You know what, before I start talking about the rodeo, I feel like I need to...So me as the rodeo, I'm not that involved, you know, Stacy, with the executive committee, I think you call it, with all of Fiestas Days. But I do, we do a rodeo reading challenge for the rodeo, where we go to every elementary school in town. And Garrett and Amy have both been involved with that and have been just amazing to us. So as I sat back there listening, it made me think, my mother-in-law always had a saying that she would tell me, "If you need something done, ask the busiest person you know." And there's a lot of truth to that. I'm sure that they just do awesome because I've been and seen them in their professional life, and they're both amazing. So I have some rodeo committee members here with me, Mr. Seth Perrins and Doug Ford. I'd like to invite them up. Mayor, you can stay where you're at. We're missing Dale Robinson, Chris Ivey, and Troy Ryan weren't able to be here tonight. But anyway, we've got some fun things. As you guys know, the rodeo is coming fast. What are we, today? The second? And our first performance is Friday, the 19th. One thing I for sure don't want to forget to say is just this morning, we put 1,900 tickets over the course of the five nights back on our website, sfcitytix.com. So if you were one of the many that were on the outside looking in, jump on there ASAP, and there's some tickets on there, and you can come join us at the rodeo. As we're talking about tickets, one other thing we should mention, historically, tickets go on sale the day after the rodeo ends. We're gonna change that this year. We're gonna have tickets wait and go on sale for the 2025 rodeo in April of 2025. So just a couple, two or three months before. So kind of watch for that. That'll let us all have a little bit of time to breathe after the rodeo, and that'll make it a little better. So Seth, anything you want to say? I always want to thank the elected officials. We couldn't do it without the support that you guys give us. It's a big job, but we're lucky enough to have you guys' full support. And it really lets it be an amazing event. So thank you. Oh, and Steve Adams is also here. Adams, is Steve? Golly, Steve's also a member of the rodeo committee. So thank you for being here. Yeah, so we're lucky enough to have our royalty with us here tonight. I'll invite them to come up with us. Our queen is Dally Holyoke from St. George, and I've had the opportunity to meet and to get to interact with Dally a little bit. Her and my oldest son, Luke, served on the state presidency of the Utah High School Rodeo Association. And watching Dally as she carries herself and interacts with people, she's gonna do an amazing job for us. So we're really lucky to have her, and I'll let Dally introduce her attendance and help her.
Well, like you said, my name is Dally Holyoke. I'm from St. George, Utah. So I just want to thank everybody for welcoming this St. George cowgirl to Spanish Fork because you guys have been nothing but welcoming and loving, going out into the community, whether I just be at a store or just anywhere. Everyone stops me and just wants to interact and is so sweet and loving. With me, I've got my first attendant. This is Riley Warnock. She's from West Jordan. I've got my second attendant, Tara Higgins from Heber City. And then with us is Darby Haskell. She's our Diamond Fork Riding Club junior queen, and she's from just close by here in Payson. So the four of us get to travel all summer long, go to different rodeos, different parades, really anywhere that anyone is going to welcome us and let us come support and promote Spanish Fork. So we've had a very, very busy summer. I think we're in a new location every single weekend for a rodeo. I've had a blast. I can speak for myself, and I think for them as well. We've had so much fun. I can't wait for the rodeo. I am like checking my calendar every day, counting down the days. So thank you for what you guys do and helping the rodeo. We can't wait to kick it off on the 19th.
Yeah, come on, let's hear it. Yep, yep.
Let me jump in really quick. So I had the opportunity, as these young ladies competed for this position that they're in, to listen to the judges interview with them. And I'll tell you, that was pretty intense in there. They really shined, but it's not because they didn't have tough competition, because there was some good competition between these ladies. And they did really well. I definitely agree with the picks, but just know that we had some good ones to choose from. And, you know, Stacy was there, part of those interviews, and actually interviewed all of them at one point in time. But nevertheless, it wasn't an easy task for them to get to where they're at today. And kudos to them. They're true athletes in this area of rodeo. But I'd like to hear from each one of them.
Sorry, the former chief, the former chief said it, so let it be done.
Stacy, I've been working on my Spanish, just for you. I'm trying to learn Spanish.
Yeah, because I thought you had just got home from your mission and speaking Spanish, and it wasn't you.
I know. I'm learning, just for you, though.
Then you're a step ahead of me.
Okay, perfect. All right, I'll help you. Once I'm fluent, I'll help you.
Okay, I'll need all the help I can get.
Okay. I'm Riley Warnock. I actually grew up not too far from here in West Jordan, and rodeo's always been a part of my life. My grandparents were over the Western Stampede, so I got to grow up watching how the mayor and the rodeo committee and the executive board really take a step in and help get the rodeo where it is today. And you guys are a big part of our community, and we really appreciate everything you do for us because without you guys, we would not be able to have the rodeo we have, and we would not have a sold-out crowd for all five nights. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm glad to be here. My name is Tara Higgins. I'm from Heber City, and I'm very grateful to be a part of this community, being a rodeo queen and being able to watch Dally and everything that she's been doing for you guys. And I'm following in her footsteps. So I've really been appreciative of Dally for everything that she's done to help us out. And the same thing that goes for you guys. I'm very excited for the Spanish Fork Fiestas Days, and I can't wait for the rodeo.
My name is Darby Haskell. I'm just from downtown Payson, and this has basically been my hometown rodeo. I don't think I've ever missed a year my whole entire life. And my dad has been judging the Fiestas Days contest for as long as I can remember. So I've kind of grown up around it, and I couldn't be more excited to be a part of the committee. And I know I don't have any better three girls to look up to for the Fiestas Days royalty. So I want to thank you all. I want to thank all of you. So I'm just super excited.
Thanks, ladies. It sounds like a lot of you traveled far distances to be here. So thanks for being willing to represent Spanish Fork so beautifully, but you...
So they work endless hours all year long, the second each year is over, so thanks to them for all they do in keeping this rodeo amazing.
We're really grateful for our rodeo royalty and the work that they do in the arena and outside of the arena. Looking at, at Dave Euler, he was a member of this rodeo committee for about twenty or twenty-five years, maybe thirty, I can't, I don't remember the math for you, Dave, but it was a long time, so we could bring him up as well and, and make him come up here. But just want to touch on a couple of things that the rodeo is going to do this year in terms of the performances, we'll have JJ, our clown, will be here and honestly, backed by popular demand, he's, he's a crowd favorite, loved by all that come to the rodeo. And, and what we love about JJ is he becomes a part of our community for the, every night that he's here. And if you go multiple nights, which many of our fans do, and frankly, many of our fans go all five nights, and when they go all five nights, if you go to another rodeo or, or have maybe a, a different clown, every night, their jokes are the same. And with JJ, we've had him for so many nights, I have rarely heard, for many years that he's, the many years that he's been here, I've rarely heard the same joke. He's fresh and, and new every night and we love that about JJ, so he's there every night this year. And we have Cowboy Kenny Steel Rodeo again. We love that act, we've had it for many years. This year, we actually do have Cowboy Kenny jumping his, his motorcycle. If you know Cowboy, who Cowboy Kenny is and if you're in the motorcycle world, he's kind of a big deal. If you don't know who he is, watch Florida Georgia Lions video, "This is How We Roll", he's the guy that's in the motorcycle up in the tree. And yes, he jumped that motorcycle into that tree, stuck the landing perfectly for that video and there was no TV tricks at all in the making of that. But Cowboy Kenny and Anthony will be jumping this year in our rodeo. If you come, you're going to see a stage coach this year do some things inside of the rodeo. We're not going to tell you what they're going to do, but you'll see a stage coach in the rodeo doing some different things. It might be different every night, just have to come and see. As Nick mentioned, some more tickets went on sale today and we expect that they're going to go fast. I think we already had five hundred, plus or minus about five hundred walk out the door just today. And so people, if they want a ticket, they weren't able to get one in about the week that it sold out, right after the twenty-fifth in about three or four days. And so they, they can get online right now. I think that's it. Did I miss anything?
Well, thanks, everyone. Let's snap a picture and have everyone come up front.
Picture time. Thank you. Great work.
All right, front row, go this way, two steps. Yeah, there we go. All right, here we go, one, two, three. Stay there. Go ahead.
Stay there.
One more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Very good stuff. I think it's, if it hasn't been mentioned, we're mentioning it again, but the Fiesta Days magazine should be in your mailbox, so keep it close to you as the, the week is fast approaching, as you turn to the middle of it to see what's on the calendar. It already begins on the fifth, so we're close to the fifth and we're already off and running, so very good stuff. Thank you, queens. Yes, you have something else to add?
No.
What?
Nothing else, just we need to wrap up.
Oh, okay. Seth wants to prolong it for some reason.
No, we're not, we're done.
Okay. Well, I just think it's worth, I think it's worth asking if there's any questions about different events or activities, where you need to be.
Any questions from the council about Fiesta Days? You pretty much know it, just follow Stacy, follow Councilwoman Beck, she'll lead you.
When Stacy says jump, I say high.
You say how high. The largest PRCA rodeo in the state of Utah and a bunch of events around it, so make sure we see everybody at Fiesta Days.
Mayor, we didn't mention that the Fiesta Days, the Pioneer Days rodeo and the, what is it?
Ogden Pioneer Days.
Days of Forty-Seven rodeo, right? They join in and we, we combine contestants and scores and the winner of that gets thousands of dollars, they get recognition at a, at a banquet in the year and, and it's pretty neat marketing that we have there between the three rodeos.
It is a big deal. We have teamed up with the other PRCA rodeos in the state to make it the Utah Swing, so the best cowboys and cowgirls and the best stock are in the state of Utah for that week of the 24th. So if you are a rodeo fan, you, you will be, the, the best athletes will be present, so don't miss it. And it's the Taylor Swift Rodeo, so it's sold out already, so.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
Nothing else?
Nothing else, we're good.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, I think there's something between you and Seth, one wanting to move on and the other one not wanting to move on, but we'll move on. We're going to number five on our agenda, council, excuse me, public comments. Anybody from the public that would like to address the mayor and council? You have the ability to do that now, just state your name for Ms. Tara Silver so she gets it on the record.
Sawyer Hamilton for the record. Rest easy, I'm not going to yell at anybody, this isn't a tirade of any sort. I just want to thank the city, knowing that you're going to be discussing the general plan update and our station area plan tonight. I don't know if formal actions are being taken, but I'm very excited to see the city move into this phase. I served a mission up at church headquarters in Salt Lake and so I personally have witnessed smart planning in all aspects. The access to transit and also just maximizing the benefit to the public through access to transit and dense development is so immeasurable. I am excited to see Spanish Fork embrace that and be progressively thinking, so once again, thank you to all of you on the city council and our city staff who are forward-thinking and praying that moving forward, this process will just benefit our community to its most effect. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing none moves us to council comments, we'll start on this end with Councilman Took and we'll go this end to Councilman Marshall.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Just three items from me tonight. First of all, we had a couple weeks back, the, the Youth Arts Festival and I won't talk much about it, I'm sure others want to, but my, my children attended this as they do every year and they just had the most spectacular time. And I just wanted to thank those who oversaw that, the directors and the RAP tax for funding it. It's such an amazing program for our youth and if your, your kids aren't doing that, I hope next year they, they can. Next is, I want to talk a little bit about our, our Miss Spanish Fork. So a couple weeks ago, we had the, the Miss Utah pageant up in Salt Lake and we had our very own Miss Spanish Fork Alexis competing and Councilman Euler and I were able to do a mock practice interview with her before she went up a couple days prior, had a really good experience. And, and then she did amazing. She actually won, I wrote it down here, let's see, it was called the Overall Rookie Talent Award, which is a pretty big deal in the Miss Utah world. She's amazingly talented on the piano and so we're just very proud of her for representing Spanish Fork so well. We had others, other, other girls who are from Spanish Fork competing with different titles up there at Miss Utah and they did, they did amazing also. And so again, thank you to those, those young, young ladies for just representing our city so well and it's such an important statewide competition. And then last for me, just this last Saturday, I was able to be a part of the inaugural Bike with Mike event and I just, I love this event, I'm excited for its potential and the future of it. I'm sure it will grow. It was fun to, to just be there with, you know, Councilman Cardon and the mayor, of course, and, and those residents who were able to attend and we had a great time, the weather was perfect and just a really, really fun event and I'll let them talk more about it, but that's all I've got, mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Took, Councilman Cardon.
Thank you, mayor. Just a few things, kind of starting off where Councilman Took started off, Youth Arts Festival, we didn't get to talk about it last time, but we had 1,428 kids that participated in that event this year, with sixty-seven teachers, assistants, volunteers. It takes a small army literally to, to make that happen and then the RAP tax and they are already starting to gather supplies and different things for next year, so they just move on to the next thing. So thank you to Whitney, Emily, all of those that put time, a lot of time to making that event happen, unlike Councilman Took, so that our kids can have a good, good experience. If you haven't had a chance, on SFCN's YouTube channel, and I'm sure it's playing on Channel Seventeen in the loop as well, there is a video where Whitney's able to talk a little bit about what happens there, but also to show a lot of the different activities that happen there. It's really cool. Next thing, staying with the youth arts or with the arts council, this was a Fiesta Days item, but I wanted to make sure we got through that a little bit quicker. We do have SpongeBob coming up as the community theater will be doing that. Tickets are on sale now, that will be held at Maple Mountain High School. SFCityTix is where you get those and it's July 18th through the 27th. There are some matinee performances, so daytime ones, if you have little kids that want to go that can't go a little bit later, I think it starts at 7:00 PM on those nights, but lots of kids doing that. I want to say there's eighty-plus kids or people in the community in this program, so a lot of, a lot of people making this happen, so there's that. Last thing that I wanted to just share is I wanted to thank a lot of our employees, we've had some interesting things happen throughout the city in the last month. A power outage, a crazy windstorm, where we had lots of people coming together to make that happen, our, our public works team making sure that they're there, trying to get the power back on really quick. I think it was out for just over an hour, is that right Seth? Two hours? Where, when we first got it and it's as widespread as it is happening, we think it's going to be a long time and our team along with other power companies in the area make sure that happens. We have police officers chasing down signs with the windstorm, but I just want to thank our, our employees in town that go above and beyond in, especially in those moments, but not just those, but every day to make sure that we stay safe, but that we have the, the needed things that we have in our community. That's all I have, mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman Cardon, Councilman Euler.
Thank you, mayor. Each summer, our senior center pushes pause and takes a couple of months off and they're currently closed. They'll be open again beginning August 12th, but before they closed, they had one final member meal for all of the senior members down at the sports park. They held a, a, a large barbecue where we grilled a bunch of burgers, Dale, Bronco, Councilman Cardon and myself grilled up, spent, spent a couple hours in the near hundred-degree temperatures grilling up a lot of hamburgers. From what I heard, we fed, I believe, just over two hundred people that day, so it was impressive. And I think one of my favorite comments was afterwards, one of the seniors came up to me and said that was the first time in a very long time that he ate a hamburger that was cooked all the way through, so I was impressed with that. So Dale, Dale did a good job cooking his burgers, but again, August 12th, senior center will start back up, so looking forward to that. That's all I've got, mayor.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman Euler, Councilwoman Beck.
I already took my twenty-nine minutes and fifty-five seconds and so I will...
Nothing else?
No. I'm good.
Councilman Marshall.
I'm going to take the one second that she left on the table. I don't have any comments this week.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Only one I'm going to piggyback on is what Councilman Took mentioned and thank, thank you to Pete Hanson and Travis Bourne for being down there with SFCN to cover the Bike with Mike event. Thank you to Erica, thank you to Bronco, thank you to the, all the Parks and Rec staff, Paul and, and everybody that was down there to get that kicked off, thirty, forty, maybe fifty of our friends were, were there that sho, showed up and ready to go and ready to bike the River Trail with us and, and we had a good time doing it. I, I think I'd let city manager Seth Perrins know after that if you're having a bad time and you're stressed out and you're probably thinking too much about like, I don't know, politics or, or life or something, get yourself down on the trail at some point because that's where the happy people are. Everybody that you, we rode by that were either on foot or on bikes were saying good morning, were, were, you know, very courteous of moving over or, or, you know, just talking to each other and, and smiling and waving and I think there's something to it. Well, I, I don't think, I know there's something to it. When we're being active and healthy, your physical health can help your mental state and that doesn't mean that we all need to be the, the, the perfect example of, of physical health, to just be involved in getting out there and in trying to improve. And so that morning with a bunch of people on the trail, trying to improve themselves and, and us doing that together as well. Pete will, will be releasing these photos and we'll share them out there as well, but Travis has got some, some video to, to go with it, I'm sure that we'll see in the next few days. The youth city council was, it was so helpful to be along the trail and, and check in with people. The first people that showed up, I was a little intimidated because I had to go find my bike in the shed and then a, a nice gentleman, Chris, I believe was his name, is it, was that what it is? And does bike repairs, look for his door hanger on your doors, but he made sure I was pumped up in the tires and taken care of. And the intimidation part came when some people showed up to this event and said, "We just got done with our, with our bike trip around Utah Lake and now we'll bike with you a couple of miles." And I was like, "Okay." But we, we went from the sports park up to Poplar Lane Trailhead and some kept going all the way up to Canyon View Park and made it back, but good job to the rec department having drawings for people, just about everybody walked away with something and we're, we're looking at, at making this a, maybe a spring and summer event, maybe a bi-annual event rather than just an annual event, but we're so lucky and, and I'm glad, I'm glad Dave's here, Dave Euler's here to, to hear this and some other people that are instrumental in this, but this trail and Jared Johnson as well, this trail that, that goes now, look, eight or ten miles from, from one end of our city to the other is just one of the best things about our city. And, and so we're, we're lucky to have it, it's being taken care of very well. Commend the residents for, for cleaning up after themselves, for, for being courteous on it, but it, it certainly is a blessing to have in our community and just see, see places that you wouldn't normally see in our community. Maybe you see them from afar, but here you get to, to be right down in the middle of the river bottoms and, and along the beautiful river, so. Thanks again, Erica, thanks again, the whole team of, of Parks and Rec for putting that together and, and Jesse and, and Landon and myself didn't race, but I'm pretty sure Jesse had a good stride going. I think, I think he's the, I think he's the...
I also had three kids I was chasing, so.
Okay, that was it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. My money's on Jesse, but we got some time to maybe get up to Jesse's level and, and try to go fast next time, but great event, great day. See, there he is, look at that. It's like Lance Armstrong wearing a Spanish Fork t-shirt.
With a smile.
Yep, with a smile, so.
I think Pete said smile.
That looks like a grimace.
Yeah.
We were hoping you were going to be there Shane.
I know. Where were you? Were you on your bike around the lake?
I was, I was, I'd already taken two laps and I'm like, eh.
He's electric bike.
Fair enough, of course.
Fair enough, yes, yes.
Yeah, electric bikes, pedal bikes, they were all welcome, it was a great time and we had, we had a good time. So watch for more details again, we'll do it again. I'm thankful, I'm not like, I told some people, I'm thankful, my name's not Clint, like sprint with Clint, isn't the same kind of ring and I don't sprint, but...
Bike, bike works.
Bike works, yep, so there we go. Okay, that's all we have. Any other council comments before we move into the rest of our agenda? Okay, we'll go to consent items, we have two items, A and B on consent items. Any questions about the consent items? If not, an entertaining motion to approve the consent items.
I move to approve the consent items.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon. Seconded by Councilman Took, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Consent items.
Oh, go ahead. I'm going to chastise those two on the end, so you just keep going.
Okay.
Dudes!
They're supposed to do...
Know your roles.
Their area of the agenda.
Shane puts on a cowboy hat.
One thing, we just know.
Oh, we just know.
They should know.
Consent items are done, takes us to new business, A, B, and C. Appointment to the seniors advisory board, this is probably Councilman Euler area. I entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
I move to approve the consent items.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Consent items...
Oh, go ahead. I'm going to chastise those two on the end, so you just keep going.
Okay.
Dudes!
They're supposed to do...
Know your roles.
Their area of the agenda.
Yeah.
Shane puts on a cowboy hat.
One thing, we just know.
Oh, we just know.
They should know.
Consent items are done. Takes us to new business, A, B, and C. Appointment to the seniors advisory board. This is probably Councilman Euler area, unless somebody here from the Parks and Rec is to talk about it, or you?
I don't see anybody, so I'll take, yeah, I'll take care of it. First, we've got Marla Kilkenny, we want to thank. She has served diligently on our senior board for a little while now. As a member of our advisory board, Marla has assisted with numerous activities and special events. She has been greatly appreciated and will be missed. In Marla's place, we propose that Edlin Monk be approved to be a member of our senior citizens advisory board. Edlin has been married to Duane Monk for 61 years, and they have lived in Spanish Fork for 25 years. She has been a member and a volunteer at our center for the last three years. Her service to our seniors includes assisting with serving lunch and driving seniors to the center on her own time, seniors that are unable to drive themselves. She has commented many times that she loves all of our seniors and the camaraderie, so grateful for Edlin, for her willingness to serve on our board.
Okay, there's an appointment request to the seniors advisory board for Edlin Monk. I would...
Mayor?
Yes?
There's also one for the Youth City Council Advisor, Allison Jennings.
I'm not seeing that one here.
Same motion.
Okay.
That one, you want to, Jesse probably can speak to that.
Yeah, Jesse. So, we're not losing anyone on the Youth City Council Advisory Board, but we are trying to add, just to give them a little bit of depth. Allison, I believe she might be a Spanish Fork lifer, I think she graduated with you, Mayor, if I remember correctly. Is that...
Yeah, I think that's right.
Or she's your age. Landon, we talked about all three of you at some point, so she has some children on there, and she loves Spanish Fork and just really wanted to be a part of it. We interviewed a few people for this position. Thanks to Tara and Heidi for helping with that, and went with Allison, so...
There's also Brock Bank Bronco.
She's a Bronco, all right.
Yeah, you're set, right there.
Broncos, there you go, I like it. Okay, very good. We have two appointments, then, that I am putting in front of the council, for, one for seniors advisory board, and one for Youth City Council. I would entertain a motion that sound like it's kind of already been made, but if somebody wants to make it official.
I move to accept Edlin Monk as the appointment to the seniors advisory board, and Allison Jennings to the Youth City Council Advisory Board.
Motion made by Councilman Euler.
Second?
Seconded by Councilwoman Beck. A roll call vote here. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Okay, those appointments are approved. Thank you both for being willing to serve in those capacities. Item two is the West Meadows Annexation Acceptance, Mr. David G. Anderson.
Nick, can you just pull up the one attachment that we have on the agenda? On February 20th, the council accepted a slightly smaller version of this for further study, and we got about to the end of the annexation process for what was accepted then, which was seven and a half acres smaller than what's before you tonight, when the applicants requested to have the proposal changed. There's a parcel owned by the Larson family on the north end of what we're seeing here, which incidentally is located not too far from the Salem Benjamin Interchange, that's this right here. This is our 1,900 south, 8,800 south, Utah County coordinate. What we're seeing here in yellow is just under 50 acres, and again, what the council previously accepted for further study was everything except for a parcel right here owned by, like I said, the Larson family. At this point, if the council were to accept this for further study tonight, that kind of takes us back to square one. We recertify the annexation with the expanded boundary. We would do new notices and that type of a thing. Given that we've been through a good part of the process before, we'd be a little bit quicker in our office to get some things done. This likely would be back before the council in September, after it'd been to the Planning Commission for a recommendation to consider whether you actually wanted to annex and what the zoning should be.
Thank you, Dave. Questions for Dave on this?
Answer, man.
Something we've already looked at, but just adjusting it a little bit.
Expanding, yep.
Why the adjustment?
Another property owner wanted to be included in the annexation, and the original petitioners also wanted to see that happen, so it's really at their request.
Dave, just...
Go ahead, sorry, Jess.
I was just going to say, so just walk through what kind of public hearings will happen before this would be, they would be annexed, and I think it's an important part of the process.
Yeah, great question. So, again, assuming the council accepts this for further study tonight, then we, in our office, and notices according to state code to different entities, and as we get towards the end of what's a 30-day-long protest period, then we would schedule the proposal for a review by the Development Review Committee, which makes a recommendation on the annexation and also on what the zoning of the annexation should be. Typically, it's not long after the Development Review Committee makes a recommendation that it goes to the Planning Commission. They take the same action by way of making a recommendation, and there's really just one public hearing with annexations, and that's with the city council. So, oftentimes, we'll wait until the Planning Commission has made their recommendation to send notices for that public hearing. Sometimes, we'll time it up to where maybe notices go out before the Planning Commission meeting. My guess, like I said, is that that would be in September, but it's, again, it's just that one public hearing with the city council.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilman Carden and Councilman Marshall.
It might be worth mentioning, Dave, also, the, I mean, the public process is very spelled out in the code, state code. There are protest periods, people can submit information outside of a public hearing as well, and that happens, may not happen, but that's an option that anybody has.
Thank you, Dave. Looks like five findings that are listed there. I think we're trying to make these motions with the findings being included.
So, curious on that, why do we have a finding if all we're doing is saying, "Study it further"?
I think that's a very rational point.
I mean, that's, the point of the study is to come up with some findings on the property.
I would say, for example, if it weren't...
Your mic's off.
Thank you. So, for example, and just, I'm actually not reading the findings. I could and maybe should really quickly, but, and I would say that some of those certainly are premature. I think that's maybe just us being a little overzealous, but if it weren't in the city's annexation policy, then we wouldn't be doing this, you know, and some of those things. I think some are given, but...
I guess it was finding three that was like, meh, I mean, why are we talking zoning at this time? But, one, two, four, and five makes sense to me.
And I think you could shift, adjust finding two, to, if you wanted to, you can strike it completely, but I think the general plan in the area would identify those, you know, but I think that sends a signal of what the initial intent could be, but you could strike it as well.
But it's probably already, it's probably part of the landowner requesting that as well. I would think if I'm the landowner that's saying, "Hey, I'm trying to follow what you guys are doing down here, so I'd like it in some sort of, what, delineation or some sort of mention, if you will, that I could point to, well, hey, here's the findings of when you accepted it for further study. Tell me why you would deviate from that if..."
Yeah, I think that's sort of probably my concern, is that...
Yeah, I wouldn't want to... As you might.
We're ahead of that, right. Number two is just a reiteration of what the general plan says, and I think that is, that is important. Generally, we think that it should look like this when and if it develops. Perfectly comfortable, that one's. Number three, where it says, "Should be utilized at this time." These two zones should be utilized. It seems premature for us to give you direction to use these current zones.
I'd strike it.
You can strike it.
Every time I do that, I feel like I have to make the motion.
I feel like you do, too.
It is.
It did, huh?
I would love you to read each one of them out loud, so I fully understand it completely as well.
Add an amortization right to it.
I'm not going to say amortization.
Okay, if there's no other questions for Dave, I'd entertain a motion on item B.
So, Dave, real quick, before you get to that, Shane, timeline on this. So, we initially approved the study back in February, and things changed, so it's before us again today. Is it possible, this creates an island, which state code has changed, so that's no longer an issue with annexations. Is that correct, though?
No, that's not entirely true. It could potentially create a peninsula. We've mentioned that at the DRC, that the applicants looked at that, and if it does, there is the process where they can request Utah County to approve that. And so, if the county and the city agree, you can create an island or peninsula.
Okay, but that will be looked at during the study?
Yeah, during the study process.
Okay. And then, timeline, I guess it's possible that between now and when the study concludes, that additional property owners may decide they want to be part of the annexation again, and then we just go through the same process?
It's conceivable, sure, then it would be up to you to decide if you wanted to accept that for further study, or...
So, I guess my question is, if we approved it in February, here we are in July, why wasn't, why didn't it get to the process to be completed prior to another property owner jumping in and having to go through the process?
Yeah, we were close, and the applicants, the applicants have talked to, and this is just what I understand, from what they've shared with me. They've approached a number of property owners in the area, and I think they continue to have conversations with them. I think they would like the annexation probably to be larger even than what's presented tonight, so I think it was just a matter of those two parties.
Are we close with any other properties, or we feel like this is going to move forward as is?
I do not know, but I would, I would be surprised for a few different reasons, including some conversations we've had recently with a property owner in the proposed annexation area. If this, you know, maybe stalls out, so to speak, or gets delayed in any way, again, that's just my guess.
I would, I would add, though, there isn't a rush on the part of the applicant or on the part of the city, and so if they, you know, there's not something imminent that's happening, that being in the city's limits demands at this time. So, I think this is a good, this is a good process that we do follow, that allows for the applicant to be a little bit nimble, you know, because they didn't have it all at the beginning, that they can amend that application. I probably have a similar opinion as Dave, that I wouldn't expect it to change again, but if it did, honestly, it's not a big deal, as we just simply adjust. And for them, it restarts a clock, but it's not that bad. So, I appreciate the, I appreciate their continued efforts. I think as a city, it's good to grow in some uniform manner, so I like, I like that a lot. And if it adjusts again, then you just see it again, and they start that clock over again.
Yeah, thank you.
I like that it brings it into the public domain, and we start talking about it more publicly, right? It doesn't commit us to anything. It says...
Study it.
Study it. Let's go think about it and look at it. What does it make, does it make sense? We can say yes or no in the future, but now we get to talk about it, instead of, you know, maybe it's not so public at that point, so I like that, I like the idea.
And I think talking about it, it's important to highlight the verbiage here, again, for the public, is we are, we are looking at initiating the process to potentially annex this. We are not the initiatory on the annexation itself. That's the property owner that's saying, "Hey, we..."
Plural.
Yeah, "we are want," oh, yeah, plural of them, "we are wanting to do this, so please study it to see if it makes sense for the city." So, rarely are we the ones initiating annexation. We're just initiating the study at the request of the landowner to do it. Okay, anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Good. Councilman Marshall, you were trying to do a motion.
Do you want me to read all, all the findings?
Except, except three.
Yes.
Okay. I'll move to accept the West Meadows Annexation Acceptance for further study based on the following findings. One, that the subject property is located within the city annexation policy boundary and growth management boundary. Two, that the city's general plan and land use designation currently for the annexation area are commercial, mixed-use, and urban density residential. The new three, that utility and street dedication should be further discussed and addressed in the annexation, and five, that the name will need to be changed.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Beck. A roll call vote here. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Item C is approved. Onto the next step there, or, excuse me, item B is approved. We're on to item C now. Resolution repealing 21-4, replacing it with a resolution authorizing Public Works Director, City Engineer, to execute water applications. This is sounding like something Jared Johnson's going to talk to us about, if I'm correct. Is that right?
He doesn't look really excited to jump off and talk to us.
He's actually very excited.
Can you see? That's his excited face.
He doesn't put on a jacket for anybody, or just anything.
I didn't know we could just wear polls, Snyder, I would have. This is a resolution repealing an existing resolution to give the Public Works Director the authority to execute water applications concerning water rights, water share transfers, encroachment agreements, and utility-related services with the state of Utah, and we're adding the canal companies and the engineer, or, sorry, irrigation companies to that. The big change is that we're just going to add canal and irrigation company to the existing resolution.
So, prior to this, you could not enter that, we had to?
With the canal company or an irrigation company, yes.
Jared, do you know off the top of your head what resolution 21-4 states that we're repealing?
It's the same resolution as this resolution. This resolution just includes...
So, just adding more.
Canal company and irrigation company.
Okay. Any questions for Jared on this?
Should have more, since he dressed up for this.
I came for the dinner, but...
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's, the important part of this is that as you do these agreements and you transfer important water shares and rights and utilities that get into places, that we work with those entities that have the domain over that, and obviously, we have good relationships with them, but this is, looks like it's making that a little bit more streamlined process, so they know who to work with.
Yeah, we know who to work with. Let the experts take care of it, right?
Yep. Okay, if there's no other questions for Jared on this, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution for water encroachment agreements.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Carden. A roll call vote, Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
And Councilman Euler.
Yes.
That is approved. Item C, that takes us to the discussion section of our agenda, the general plan update. Mr. Dave Anderson.
Thank you. Once again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To kind of set the stage for what might be a pretty quick discussion tonight, you all are aware that, actually, last year, we started a project to update the city's plan that guides future land use. We call that the general plan, and there's kind of another project that's piggybacking on that, and it involves a more localized, area-specific, I would probably say, kind of plan for land uses around where, right now, UTA is making plans for a future commuter rail stop in Spanish Fork, when frontrunner comes south with stops in Springville and Spanish Fork and Payson. We are well over halfway through on this project. We're certainly at a point, by way of developing a new version of our general plan and a kind of our initial version of a station area plan, to where I think going forward, we'll probably be touching base with the city council quite a bit more often. In one way or another, it might be a monthly update like this, might just be correspondence that we send. That's something that we've talked with our consultants that are working on the project about, and they're committed and on board to do that, and that's, I think, become particularly important, as now we've gotten through a couple of pretty significant public outreach efforts, and maybe, Nick, this would be a good time to pull up, it's called a story map. There's a version of this currently available. There's a version of this currently available on our website, and this is an updated version that, that early next week, we'll have on our website tied to what's probably our last kind of citywide survey that we want to send out. This document is one way to simply provide, and maybe, Nick, just kind of scroll through this leisurely pace. That is, incidentally, the title of the project, Today's Progress, Tomorrow's Pride. This story map provides great background on what's happened so far by way of different efforts to engage with the community. It also outlines some of the key pieces of input and data that we've received via both public input and through research that the consultant team has done. Early on, the goals for the project were identified, for example. And in short, there's a lot of information available here. And in fact, we'll give the council a preview of this. I'll share the link with each of you guys tonight, so you'll have it a few days at least in advance of when, when we open it up next week. As we get maybe towards the end of this, bit of information that we have right now, and, you know, again, this, this goes back to the beginning, and will continue to stay that way. And that's an important part of the point that I'll make in a moment. If anybody's interested in getting up to speed on what's happened and to learn more about what's going on next, this is the best way. And maybe five or 10 minutes worth of reading to get a feel for what's going on and what we're trying to accomplish. In case somebody is coming into this cold. But it's generally considered best practice that as input gets received on different things that people feel should happen, maybe shouldn't happen, whatever might influence how ultimately you as governing body, legislative body, decide the future vision of Spanish Fork should look, oftentimes, options start to sift out of that process of gathering public input and putting it into some form that people can understand. And we're down to a couple of key scenarios that have, I think, very clearly, through the input that's been received, sort of risen to the top of a number of different ideas that have been, been shared. And I was mentioning a couple of, couple of points. I received surveys from over three thousand members of the community. And that's a really strong response. If you just look at the percentage and, you know, things like that, that many hundreds of people that have participated in other forms, whether it be focus groups, individual stakeholder groups, and other things. And, and a lot of that information is, is described in this story map here. So I think we've been very fortunate to have not only received a lot of input, but to have received input from a pretty broad base of stakeholders in the community, whether it's residents, business owners, both, et cetera, et cetera. And in short, what we're hearing is that for a large part of the community, people don't want to see anything change. It's no surprise. But I think it's really important that this process has helped us validate what I think a lot of us would have assumed, maybe, our residents feel about how Spanish Fork should continue to grow and, and the like. And really, we're hearing consistently that growth should focus around the interstate in one of a few different ways. So for example, on the north end of the community, UDOT has recently started construction on a new interchange. We have heard repeatedly that residents of the community are pretty comfortable with growth happening around that new interchange. Maybe with land uses existing around the interchange that they don't want to see elsewhere in the community. Hearing similar things about the area around where we think commuter rail is going to be in the community and so forth. Hearing a lot less to support the idea that the city's future land use plans should change for, for example, properties on the east bench, or maybe even along US Highway Six. Although, there also is a scenario that is being considered to kind of test some things about the level of support that might exist for land use changes elsewhere in Spanish Fork. Really have two scenarios that are described here that then become the focus of our next and really last broad effort to solicit input from the community. But we have a survey, I've given you each a draft of that. Certainly welcome any comments or input that you have on that. This is something that we want to have go live pretty soon. Basically, to have it be up and available for people to, to participate with over the next maybe two or three weeks from today, more like three weeks, in the hope of being able to have input by early August that we can start to distill and really get the project moving towards its next big step. So that's an important part of what I want to share tonight, is that for anybody that wants to participate additionally in the project, a great way is to provide your thoughts via this survey. We'll be pushing that out to the public in a variety of different ways, starting early next week. And with that as well, I mentioned some things about a couple of different growth scenarios. A big part of the survey effort now is to kind of test people's feelings about those scenarios. I think we're looking for either some direction to take things in a different direction or to somehow validate that, yes, we're on the right track, and that that is what the community expects and wants to see going forward. But we're also looking for more detailed input relative to what maybe growth in those parts of the community should look like in the future. And people will see some different things as a part of the survey that are intended to help refine the input that we receive. And the survey will be connected to our story map. And the hope will be that, you know, whether people are, are new to the project or have been involved from the beginning, that they can use the information in the story map to, to get informed on a level that's somewhat consistent, you know, for everybody that might take the survey. I mentioned earlier that we have, that we received, you know, over three thousand responses to the first survey. Here, we're looking maybe for not as many respondents, but we're really hoping to do what we can to make sure that those that respond are as informed as they can be about the project, the options that exist, and the needs of the community going forward. And there are certainly some things reflected relative to what specifically we're trying to plan for, for the future growth, number of future residents, for example, future households, et cetera, different things like that. So that in a nutshell is a report on where we're at. Nick, I'm going to ask you maybe to go back, if you can, to that, that Google slide presentation. We have one other slide. This is not entirely customary for a project like this, which is really intended to be kind of a five thousand foot above broad look at what the community wants to see throughout Spanish Fork. I think in our case, this is an imperative part of it, given that, as I understand, that the city council is very interested in certain parts of the community. And using this general plan as a way to add some definition to what is acceptable in terms of future land uses in certain parts of the community. Maybe to say it differently, I have understood that you don't necessarily want to adopt a new general plan and still have people wondering, well, what about this property? What can happen here? City council really mean that this designation on the map is what they want to see or not? And we have a handful of stakeholders in the community that we've been working with for some time. We've talked, some of us very recently, for example, about the area around, again, the Twenty-Seventh and North interchange. It's about two and a half years ago. Some of you guys remember, we had a work session with a group that's looking to develop in the area, joint session with the Planning Commission. They presented some very detailed plans for what would happen in that area. And really, we've been talking since then about, well, okay, before we move forward with any of those detailed plans and talk about zoning and development approvals and things like that, the general plan needs to be updated. So we have, you know, really a map for what zoning and developments and the like should look like. We have property owners in other parts of the community that to some degree are in the same boat. So even though, again, typically, it'd be looking more like citywide and wouldn't really drill down into specific areas. At this level of a project or with this type of a project, the consultants that we're working with have suggested that we arrange some times to meet with certain groups individually. And I'm going to throw this out because in part, I really, I really want you to tell us if we're missing something. So I'll share this, this next, Nick, if you can just go to the next slide. There's not any really magic about it. Some of you guys will recognize, I think, right off the bat, some of these sites. And again, I'll continue to refer to the, the groups that we have listed there as stakeholders. Some of them have made a pretty significant investment in the community in one way or another already, you know, by way of either developing plans or property acquisitions, different things like that. And in one form or another, also, the plans that they have presented don't conform at least what we have currently on our general plan. And in some cases, you know, like I said, where the feedback that we're getting from the community by and large is saying, don't change the future plans for my area. We think that certain sites warrant at least a conversation about what the, the property owner, developer, you know, whatever the case might be, would like to see happen with their property. So the idea is that we'll be having meetings with these folks probably after the citywide survey comes to a close. Not to come up with some kind of surefire guaranteed way to make any of these different groups happy. In most cases here, we know exactly what they want today. In some cases, like I said, they've been expressing it for a couple of years. But rather to simply understand more clearly, make sure that the consultants understand what it is that they want to do, and to see how well it does or does not fit with the rest of the input that we're receiving through this, this process. So I'd also say, like, truly trying to vet the ideas to see how well they can work or not. You know, a couple of handfuls, maybe, of entities here that we plan to meet with. If you feel like we're missing any, please let me know, and I'll share this with you guys, so you'll have it at your fingertips. We'll probably start setting up these meetings in the next week or two, just to try to catch everybody on a calendar that works for the consultant group.
Are you just meeting with them, or are we supposed to be in those meetings as well?
The anticipation would be that it would just be staff and them, yeah. Mostly, from my perspective, it's to make sure that the consultants understand the details of what, what they want to do for a variety of different reasons.
So the meeting is not to give, to have a conversation with these stakeholders about what we want to do, it's about informing the consultants that are putting the plan together what the stakeholder wants to do?
Perfect.
Okay.
Very well said.
All right. It, it's a strange process. It, not just this, but the general plan study in itself. There's, in my opinion, too many things going on at the exact same time to really get our heads around it. I mean, this is survey number two.
Two.
Two. We have not seen a solution or a scenario or anything to weigh in on, right? Or talk about it publicly. Not that we should have already seen that yet, but I look at your timeline like there is pending approval relatively soon, and it's...
We have no idea what we're looking at.
I don't. Maybe you guys do, but I don't know that I do. I don't, I mean, typically, I miss a few of these meetings a year, but I don't think I missed the one when we talked about it yet. And it, it's, it's probably coming. There's some due diligence that everyone's doing, and it's going to result in a, in a proposal. That proposal has not been generated yet, correct?
Draft versions of the scenarios have been prepared, and those have been shared. And maybe we didn't emphasize that when they were shared like we should have, but they have been, been shared by way of this is what we're hearing, so...
We, we have talked, that is true. We have talked about what we are hearing, yes, but I don't remember a general plan scenario being presented to us.
This is what currently is, and this is what we're looking to change it to?
Yeah.
Nothing like that.
It hasn't been presented like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Haven't missed that then.
Nope.
Will there be a day when that happens?
Right now, on the story map, at the end of what Nick was just presenting, you have scenario one and two.
Okay.
So we have those. The way that they're titled is a little bit wonkish, but basically, it's what I described earlier. And Nick, I think it'd be really worth just taking a minute to talk through those.
Can we go, before Nick does that, can we go to the timeline real quick? I'm just trying to put this in my head. I'm almost tempted to say, let's put a, let's pause this for a bit, and let some things play out, so that we can be more informed on when we make a decision on this, amateurization. Decision on the general plan. Where in this timeline is it in front of the council to have conversation, to take feedback from the public before adoption of the general plan?
Towards the end.
Okay. So there'll be some scenarios out there, and that's what you're directing Nick to do, is go look at those scenarios.
If it's towards the end, is there an opportunity to then rework what we're hearing, right? Like, so, and I don't know what that would be, per se, but let's say, they come in, public comes in, they have some, some thoughts, some input, and we say, yeah, let's rework this completely. Is there any time for that? Because if it's at the end, we basically have used our allotment, and we're done with this work group, and then it becomes city staff's issue to try to solve, right?
What you just described could always happen with any project, right? The council doesn't act until the council's comfortable acting. Now, I think there's been a serious breakdown. If there's such a strong disconnect between what's being delivered to the council and how the community feels about it, or if the council ends up being surprised by what they're seeing when you get at the end of a project, things have not gone well if that happens. Even just what I'm hearing right now definitely makes me feel like it's worth taking a pause and maybe, here's what I really want to do, I want to have some conversations about what things would both help meet your expectations, but just also what would be helpful for you to better understand where we're at, how we got here, and what the next steps are, which indeed really is a big reason that I'm here now talking about this. This is, this is something of a check to see where you're at. So I think that syncs up well with where we're at. Without a doubt, the steps that'll be taken after the next survey and, you know, getting input, like I said, I'm going to say on a really local level, maybe on a project-by-project basis or proposal-by-proposal kind of basis, I think frankly, it really does get harder to move the direction of the project the closer that we get to the end. Anything can happen, and direction is followed, you know, as it comes from the council. But I do feel like this is a great time to just maybe, maybe take a little bit of additional time to make sure that you guys, and here's also how I'd put it, this is your project. So we want you to own it, start to finish, and I'm not seeing anybody, it makes me feel like you guys really feel like you own it. And I think we need to change that, so...
And I think one of the things I'm, I'm guessing is you, you're looking for a map that probably has some colors and a legend of sorts. It says, these are the things that we're kind of feeling or hearing as we're going through these.
Well, I think we've seen, we've seen that.
Okay.
No.
We have seen a, a...
A heat map, yeah.
Yeah, we've seen a map of, we've heard this here, we've heard that there.
And...
But we haven't seen, okay, we've gathered... But we haven't seen, okay, we've gathered all this data and this is what we think a scenario would be.
I think there's a reason for that. The way I look at it is we've, we've, we made a determination a while ago on who our consulting team was going to be on this. We, we vetted a couple of different groups, right? We, we chose who we did. And I feel like we've taken a step back while they do what we've hired them to do.
Absolutely.
Which is to get it as far along as they possibly can. And then I feel like it's our responsibility to get it over the finish line. Where they're still doing their part, I don't want to step in and, and get between them and the public as they do their job. Let them finish what we've hired them to do. And then we take the product, which may not be a final product. Take the product that they deliver to us and then we vet it as a council.
Yeah, that would be, that's, that's exactly the process that I would go on to go through as well. And I read this schedule and it says by the end of July, there'll be a preferred growth, a preferred scenario and a final report.
From, from the consulting team, right?
I mean, if.
I, I would expect them to give us a final result if that's what.
I would expect them to give me a draft of something and it's not final until we say it's final.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I think it's final on their end, meaning this is, our job is done. We've given you.
Here are the four scenarios, you guys do your jobs.
And now, now it's up to you guys to decide what to do with it.
Well, I agree with most of that. I think that one of the things that I don't necessarily, I, we haven't had, right? Is some of that deliberation back and forth or some of that dialogue maybe that we have up here with the consulting team. Because I think that as I look at the survey, like there's some good questions in here. However, I don't know where things are leaning right now to say whether or not these questions are leading or whether or not these questions are going to get the outcome that we're looking for. So it's hard to say, yeah, hey, let's, let's move forward with the survey, let's go. Cause I don't feel like we've had that dialogue back and forth that makes it so that, again, to what you said, Dave, is that we own this process. Cause whether or not the project is finalized at the end, I think to get the best possible scenario, we should have some of that dialogue along the way.
Okay, and I, I view it slightly differently in that as a council member, I don't want to sway the way this company does their job. Meaning if they look at me as, as an elected official who's going to make the final say and I'm telling them, I think it should be this or that. I feel like I'm influencing it towards what I want and not towards what they are hired to do.
And I, I'll just add to what you're saying, Councilman Euler, that when they give you that product, if this timeline, and I agree with you Shane, that, you know, it should say draft there. If November twenty four comes and goes and you're not done with it and it takes you another six months to get it through your process, whatever that looks like for you, that is your prerogative. Like, I think in the end, we want them to give us their deliverable and then you take however long you want. Because it is yours. And, and if, if and only when you're done with it, you say, I move to approve. Um, and I think this, I think the state law will outline things that you need to do, but you can do anything else too.
So to speak to what Councilman Carden said, what I would like to see is transparency in the process as far as understanding and seeing, okay, we're going to send out a survey. These are the questions so that we can say, okay, they're not leading them down a certain direction. That's, that's what I would like to see.
And that's the paper you just gave us?
Draft.
So if we have changes, cause I know last, the first survey, I was like, oh, I don't love that, but it already went out.
Yeah.
So this is a time for us to look this over in the next week. And if we have any suggestions for changes, to let you know.
Can we start with question one? How is that relevant?
You know, that's a good question. In fact, you could say the same thing of the first several.
Yeah, the demographic questions. I, whether based on what's language is someone's primary language, I don't know that that matters as to.
Well, I think, I think Design Workshop has done these before that they don't want to, they don't want somebody to not take the survey because they can't read English. They're saying if it's, if you speak another language, let us get you the survey in that language.
Yeah, but that doesn't need to be a question. It can be a button or something that takes them. I mean, I feel like, I feel like you're asking somebody, I don't know, anytime you're putting it in a survey, especially a question like that, you're leaning towards one answer maybe more important than another. And looking at primary language with what we're studying.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you'll ever see, question one was answered like this, therefore questions eight is this. I don't think you'll see those two together. That's never the intent.
First, I guess, yeah, I guess the question.
Seven questions.
What's the intent of the question?
Yeah, so demographic information is really helpful in surveys. Whether it's the beginning or the end, doesn't matter. It's a lot of times you see it at the end, but it's used to help categorize information. And you can say, you know, women tended towards this answer, men tended toward that answer, people of this age tended toward these answers. But you can start to characterize the data based on different demographical information. So that it's really helpful. Um, in every survey type that, that you take and study, demographic information plays a big role in how data gets analyzed and, and understood. Uh, you want demographic information, uh, that you lead out with it or not, it, it can certainly be adjusted.
Particularly where we asked a lot of these questions and I think every one of them, um, relative to the demographics with the initial survey. I think to be able to kind of measure those results with the second one, having some of that same information. With it, to see if maybe among a certain group, opinions changed on something, just, uh, at least that's what was described to me when we talked about this last week. The same question came up when.
So if we have questions or comments or input towards the survey questions, who do we direct those to?
Me.
Okay.
Yeah.
I appreciate getting this survey ahead of, ahead of time so we can look it over.
I think you guys were clear with the first one, so.
Thank you.
And I also appreciate with some of the final, the, the end questions, the images. I think that plays a huge part in people understanding what we're asking.
Can't agree more. You know, again, the effort is to try to make sure people are as informed as they can be. You know, there's phraseology that, you know, maybe we get used to because we're looking at development projects and things. But there's a language out there that just doesn't work for people like pictures do. When you're talking about, hey, what do you mean by this or that? Pictures are really important.
There's just, there's some phraseology in some of these questions that are definitely leading one hundred percent. UDOT plans to construct a new interchange. They're studying the idea of constructing a new interchange. They're not planning to do that yet. That's.
Really? They're not?
They're, have you seen a preferred alternative?
I, I get it.
Cause I don't think we have.
I know what you're saying.
I mean, there's, I think we need to be very careful because there's so many moving parts. General plan, stationary plan, an interchange plan, front runner stop. Like there's a lot of stuff piling on top of each other. We need to be very careful about what we say in here. Someone can read that as someone's made a decision that hasn't happened yet. Or that we've made a decision for someone that we don't have responsibility to make. Right? So just, I'll, I'll give you feedback, but I'm just, those are trigger words, having gone through environmental processes before.
And yet we have planned as the city, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, that's a different, but the way it's phrased, you're spot on.
Yep. Yep.
The timeline of, tonight's the second, this still intends to be open from July ninth to July twenty eighth, correct? So.
No, no, so let's maybe start there. We're going to slow down on the July nine date and bump that back at least until after your next meeting. If you're okay with that. And incidentally also, the next thing that happens to the storyline is that this timeline gets updated. So this goes back to October of two thousand and twenty-three on the front end of the project. And we do not want this to become a two thousand and twenty-five project. It's up to you to decide that, but we want to deliver on a timeframe that is consistent with this. Unfortunately, we probably are four weeks and we're probably going to add a couple of weeks to take a pause here. I'm really comfortable with that if you are. In fact, I'm only comfortable with that based on what I'm hearing tonight, you know, that we do.
I'm not, I guess, I'm not asking that question in a way of, of it's necessarily not enough time to me. I guess if, if somebody was asking me, uh, hey, Mike, you, you pressed pause on the general plan. Uh, why? I'd say, cause I want to read this document and get Dave back some different verbiage that, that maybe I think's better. Well, when you going to do that? You're going to, you know, you're going to read that tomorrow, the next day or a week out? Or do you need a month, Mike, to go over this and then get that back to Dave? And I don't think that that is fair to the, the people, the public, the public that's already taken surveys, to, to landowners that are, have already talked about this and, and, and been in stakeholder meetings and everything else. That, uh, if, if we have recommendations, we better read it and we better get back to you with some, some other stuff we want on this. So surveys can open up and people can take them.
I think we also want to make sure that it gets into a newsletter and I think the cycle that we'll hit, we'll miss it. So we'll, we'll want to push it at least a couple of weeks so we can, uh, on the tail end of the timetable, it hits a newsletter, newsletter that, that still is our, I think our number one or number two method that people tell us they, they hear from the city by. So we, we'll want it to close sometime after August fifth or something like that. I, I don't know, maybe even August tenth, maybe August tenth so that it, it opens up and, and people in the mail, uh, have the chance to get that. So I, I think, I think it needs to slow down to capture that too.
So just a couple of weeks.
So to your point though, I think that if we can, just as a group here, commit to having it to any feedback today by the end of the week, that at least gives him the time to, that he needs to go ahead.
I think that's great.
Like I think it's fair to you, what you said is it's not fair to this team to, for us to just sit on it until next council meeting to get that feedback.
So Friday is as good as Monday morning.
Okay.
So I, I mean, to that point, I think I would say Monday morning at eight AM, if you want.
And truthfully, I would not say pause, even though I have. There is other work to be done, you know? So taking a little bit of additional time on this side of it is not stopping progress. And at the same time, it is a big step. I think that's the reason that taking time now matters again. Um, we're here tonight to get your input on this stuff, so we're ready to, ready to go with that. Um, and I'm going to phrase something that I mentioned earlier a little bit differently. I want you to understand why we're doing everything we're doing. You know, what is the purpose of the survey? What is the purpose of providing the draft scenarios? What are we really trying to get out of this part of the process? Why will it matter at the end? Um, and if you have questions about why things have happened thus far, I think it's really important to understand that part of this sort of a process. Um, and if we don't understand that as we go through it, then, uh, at the end, I think we're that much more prone probably to, to maybe have questions that, that can't be answered or that, you know, are challenged to deal with and that sort of a thing. So, um, uh, we're very fortunate to have, uh, very capable folks working on this. They're accessible as well. Um, and, you know, maybe some additional airtime with the consultants would be helpful. But, uh, I really, genuine as anything could be, appreciate this conversation tonight. This is great, not only to hear what I'm hearing, but also genuinely to see what I'm seeing. Um, it's helpful for me to get a feel, I think, for, in how you guys are understanding things and where we need to maybe make up. Uh, some things that haven't happened that, that should have and.
I think too, Dave, there's, in my mind, there's, there are a lot of things going on in a predefined area, but there's not a lot of things going on other places. So we could easily get to an agreement scenario, a yes on say the north end of the city. Right? Very quickly. But maybe UDOT needs to get their stuff together and UTA needs to get their stuff together before we have a stationary plan that we've said yes to. So we know where it fits geographically. So maybe there is some things that we can say broader yes and for this place, maybe not yet. So it, it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, all or nothing.
All or nothing. I think to, to Mike's point, there are some folks on that, that list that want to know. Right? And, and they're hanging out, we've told them, we're going to do this, so just let us do this and we'll get back to you. So let's do this quickly where we can and let's be patient where we can as well.
I think that's great, that's a great way of framing it. I think you're, you're seeing again, the general plan that people could click to today and the discussions we've had with the professionals that are helping us update this now. Uh, has been frankly, some of the discussion of why are we updating the general plan? Because some of the proposals, we don't have zoning for that are coming to Spanish Fork. And so it is like, yeah, you need to update your general plan if you're really, you know, are, are going to do some stuff like that. And so a lot of it, a lot of it doesn't change, you know? They're not big drastic changes, but some tweaks here and there that I think we do, uh, and can be, uh, nimble enough to, to be able to say, okay, up here has, has been this way for, for this long or, or, or these just that much further ahead in, in the ballgame. And so being able to be nimble, I think is a good idea. But that doesn't mean, I, I think pause is, I, I appreciate you saying that, Dave. I think pause maybe the, a, a different, different word. I don't know what better word to use, but we'll get back to you within this week of maybe what we could see better, uh, working with, with us and our situation in our city on these questions. And then, uh, just for the public to be able to know, you're going to see all of the channels used from the city to encourage participation, transparency and public involvement, huge part of this. Because just like Dave said, we're owning it, uh, the citizens will own it as well, uh, of, of how much they're involved in it. And so we'll push it out when these questions are right, we'll, we'll push it out from the city side. I think individually, we can all help to push that out as well and, and make sure people are aware of the timeline and, and how important it is to make their voice heard in this process. Anything else for David on this?
I mean, thank you. I appreciate it. If it's easier to talk, you know, meet to go over the survey, just whatever, I hope that goes without saying, but, uh, just let me know.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dave.
It takes us to, uh, number ten on our agenda. Uh, item A, a development project, project on South Main Street. This is just a work session discussion, uh, no, uh.
Yeah, we.
Okay, can we do that?
Yeah, we just plan to adjourn and then continue and then.
And have that, have that discussion there. Will we need to be?
Will we be going in a closed session?
From there, yeah.
Okay, so we can go to work session, then we can go to closed session, so.
Just didn't have time today, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Well, it's not an adjournment, this meeting is not adjourned, not until you go into closed session.
So we're, uh.
You're just going to go.
We can entertain a motion.
We're going to move seats.
Go back to work session.
We don't have to entertain a motion, motion to go back to work session.
Just go.
We're just going into work.
Yeah, it's on the agenda already, so.
Okay.
We're staying in here for work session or we going in there?
Thank you all, thanks for coming. Thank you for being here today. Uh, at the city council meeting and we have work session if you'd like to join us and then we'll go to closed session after that. Appreciate it, thank you.
Good stuff.